Right, um, so I still don't see Don. And there's Donnie, right there.
Hello.
Hey, Don, how are you?
Good, beautiful day.
Sure is. Alright, I'm gonna call the meeting to where? Um, it is the Moore Town Select Board meeting, it's Monday, May eighteenth, uh, going on again on the phone conference, um, uh, based on, um, just safety, I guess, uh, and guidelines, uh, but I think, um, by next meeting, our first meeting in June, we should be able to meet and, uh, Don, at that point, now we could, we, uh, should get together, I'm sorry, we didn't, uh, talk, but I just spoke with John and decided that we, uh, probably, uh, was better to have it on the phone this week.
Yeah, that's what I was in that email.
So, um, we'll just go ahead and, uh, is anyone on the line for, for general public comment?
No.
Nope. Alright, and I think, and, uh, Cheryl, and you just joined, huh?
I did, thank you.
Alright, so if there's, I think that's everyone that's on the line, if you, you haven't been, uh, introduced, please, uh, take yourself off mute and do introduce yourself, but I think everyone's accounted for. Um, so let's go ahead, uh, if there's no general public comment, uh, Cheryl, and I believe you were, uh, wanted to be put on the agenda, and that's the, uh, budget revote procedure in June, is that, uh, you?
Yes, that's correct.
Alright, what's up?
So, uh, we have a vote on June sixteenth for a revote on the Harwood Union Unified School District.
Mhm.
The, um, governor has just signed up on Act ninety-two twenty twenty, uh, for COVID, um, elections, the select board can adopt, um, one of five different, um, procedures to use to conduct an election, and, um, due to the, um, COVID, I'm asking the select board to adopt the, um, drive-up voting method so that we can hold this election safely for voters as well as myself and staff.
Alright, um, so I don't have those, those five, uh, choices in front of me. Do you mind, um, discussing what they are and then we can talk about, um, the drive-up voting? Can you just, a short synopsis on them?
Yep, um, the, um, select board can adopt to have, uh, um, every voter be mailed a ballot. Um, they can implement a drive-up voting procedure, um. There are other different ways of, um, holding, you know, we could just mail a ballot to everyone. I don't think that that's a feasible way of doing it, um, so rather than have everyone be face to face, I'm asking that we can, um, hold the drive-up. I was intending to have people drive in through the school entrance, uh, be checked off the entrance checklist, and then vote in the parking lot, and then deposit their own ballot, um, in the depo- in the ballot box that would be held at that little parking area right near the church. As well as absentee ballots can be done just as normal, as they always have been.
Alright, and you think that'll be doable with all the construction going on and such?
Um, it can't be any different than having them drive into the parking lot anyway to come vote into the office, because that's where it would be otherwise, at the office. So they're gonna be using the parking lot no matter what.
Yep. Alright, what's everyone think? John, you wanna start?
That sounds, uh, okay to me.
Uh, Ray, you got a thought on this?
Yeah, no, it, it sounds doable to me, I think, you know, uh, we'll just have to, uh, I'll, I'll work it out with the DuBois crew that, on that very day, that we would limit ourselves to try to get our materials and stuff out into the street earlier, the previous day or something like that, that, uh, we won't be interfering much with the traffic there, so, uh, I, I think it's doable.
Alright, um, Callie, how about yourself? Any, um, opinion on this?
That's fine with me.
Alright, Donnie, what do you think?
Well, I, I don't know if that's, so I'm gonna drive in in my car, put my window down and say, "Hi, I'm, I live, I'm a resident, I'm, come to vote." And I check in that way, correct?
Correct.
And then I'm gonna park my car and get out and vote in a booth, and then drop my ballot in, and then get back in my car.
No, you're gonna vote in your car, in the parking lot, so that you don't have to be face to face with anyone, and then on your way out, you're gonna exit and drop your ballot into a box, into the, into the ballot box.
While I'm in my car.
While you're in your car.
Oh.
The, uh, other option was to be able to just have the, a local ele- election right outside, like in the ball field there, but I don't think that that will be wise, because we don't know what the weather's going to be like. So if anybody's gonna be getting wet and soaked, soaked wet, it'll be myself or my staff under a tent.
Yeah, and then people wouldn't come and vote, so, you know.
Right. But we're still gonna have absentee ballots, just like we always have.
Right. Well, that's coming up, when, when is the vote, June what?
June sixteenth, and rather than having polls open from seven to seven, I'm gonna have them open from ten to seven.
So if, to vote absentee, someone has to call, reach out to you and get a ballot sent to them?
Correct.
Wow.
They'll either call, leave me a message, or send us an email, which is what, or, yeah, that, that's what they always do anyway, so they'll either call or send me an email.
Right. No, it's just a small, it's a short window of time, it's barely a month, it's a month.
I, I hear you, um, the clerks and, and even the secretary of state have tried to get them to hold it off until the primary, but they don't wanna do that.
Cheryl, I think, um, what you've come up with, if you have proper, uh, PPE, uh, you and your staff at the tents, um, as you're handing, you're, you're taking a name, checking it off, and then handing a ballot, um, you're not receiving anything from anyone, um, I think, I think it's a good idea, and then, uh, as long as, you know, there's somewhere on the other side that's a, uh, that it can be dry, that they can drop it into a, some kind of a ballot box, uh, you know, even, that, yeah, that, I think that'll work well.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I lost my phone.
And as far as the, um, primary and the November election, the state is still trying to work out procedures and determining how we're gonna do it. They have not come up with a definite solution yet, as to whether or not they're gonna mail, whether or not they're gonna mail a ballot to every person or not, so that's something we don't have to worry.
Um, yeah, well, we can, as that gets closer and as they make their decision whether they're gonna have mail-in ballots or, or leave it to the towns, you know, we can certainly, um, do that, but I think, uh, for this one on Ju- June sixteenth, that's a great idea.
Okay, but I just, if you guys agree with it, I just need you to adopt, um, the municipality may implement a drive-up voting procedure, so that, I just need you to adopt the drive-up voting procedure, and I'm gonna work with Will Sanning, the director of elections, and he's gonna walk, he's gonna help me through it.
Alright, does anyone wanna, uh, make a motion on that, to adopt the drive-up procedure?
Sure, I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Ray, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Callie. Alright, uh, the motion is to see if the town of Moore Town, the select board, will adopt, uh, a drive-up voting procedure for the June sixteenth, uh, Harwood Union Unified, uh, um, school district budget revote, um, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Uh, I, I just had one question, uh, Tom?
Alright, I'm sorry, yeah, any further discussion? Ray, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I lost my phone for a minute, so I didn't hear all the conversation, but, uh, so when they exit, will they be putting the ballots into a, uh, box or into the, uh, unless it's the ballot machine?
No, it'll go into a locked ballot box, um, there's no tabulator for Harwood. It's just a paper vote, 'cause it's all co-mingled at the end of the night.
Okay, okay, that was my question.
Just like it is at town meeting when we have to vote on, um, the Harwood budget, you, you drop your colored ballot into that box, and your town ballot goes into the tabulator. There just won't be a tabulator.
And, and those ballots will be brought over to Harwood for counting?
Yep, two BCA members will bring it over for me.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just before, don't we have the, a, a, a vote in August that we were gonna be doing? Or are we not doing that now?
No, we do, it's the, it's the primary.
And that went, everyone was, um, suggesting that the school board, Donnie, do that, um, but they, um, chose not to.
No, no, I understand, so, in August, we'll, we'll have to, I'm just wondering, while we're taking this vote, do we wanna, or we wanna wait till then to see what, what the procedure will be then, in August?
Well, the, um, the governor and, um, the, uh, secretary of state are debating that now. They're working together to try to figure out, um, what is the best procedure.
Yeah.
So until we hear what they have come up with, whether it's at all, and I don't think it's all, you know, they're, they're talking about it all, um, everyone gets a mailed in, or a mailed ballot, which I don't think is gonna happen, but, um, you know, we will take our, you know, marching orders from them, and then, um, you know, whatever we have for options, maybe they'll give us again this option to do it the way we're doing it.
Mhm.
Any further discussion on the motion? Alright, all in favor, vote aye.
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 Alright.
Aye.
So there you go, Cheryl, um, you can work with Will and figure out what works best, but, uh, um, if there's anything you need from us, you know, let us know.
Okay, thanks.
Um, while you're on the line there, um, why don't you share a little bit with us about, you've been back now, I know, a couple, a couple weeks, you know, can you tell us how that's working? What's, needs to be changed, and then maybe share a little bit about, um, grant you're working on for, um, COVID-nineteen recovery for expenses and such?
Yep, um, I've been going back to the office, obviously, to do payroll and AP, um, and I've also been, um, going in once a week to allow title searches to happen. Most town clerk's offices are not even doing that, but I just felt that there was a lot going on, um, had some feedback from attorneys, and felt that it was necessary to go back. Um, face masks and gloves are to be worn at all times, um, and I haven't had any problems with anyone having an issue with that, so it's been working well, um, by appointment only. Um, and as far as, um, paying for the, um, working our way up towards slowly reopening, um, we've purchased some face masks and gloves, so we still don't have access to everything, so we can think about being open folk, so we're gonna continue to do what we're doing. People seem to be fine with it, um, everything's been going through the mail, and, um, I have had it. So, um, I have a quote coming tomorrow, Larry, um, at the office tomorrow to do some measurements for plexiglass, um, he's gonna done duly up a quote so that I can submit a grant with, through FEMA, hopes that every, you know, it won't be everything, but the majority of our expenses will be paid for. Um, our expenses have to be thirty-five hundred dollars or more in order to qualify for a grant at all, and it looks like we'll be well over that with this plexiglass, because it's, you know, it's, it's not, it's pretty expensive. So Larry has actually, um, drawn up a plan, and, um, the glass company actually purchased, um, are taking on his plan for what he's develop, you know, um, constructed for offices or stores or whatever, so it looks like we're going down the same route, a, a good route. I didn't wanna go somewhere where it's not gonna look nice, for the nice office that we have, but at the same time, we didn't wanna spend a whole lot of money, so after speaking with him last week, it looks like it's gonna run anywhere between thirty-five to five thousand dollars. Um, again, like I said, I'm going to apply for this grant, but I can't do that until I have the actual quote in hand, and I should have that this week.
Thanks, Cheryl, um, any questions, Cheryl?
Yeah, I'm here.
No, I have some questions for you.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm all set, anyone else has any other questions?
Ray, anything? No, there's no questions, um, Cheryl, you wanna hold on, or I don't, I guess there's nothing, um, pending for you, is there anything else that you had, that's, um?
No, I'm, I'm.
I actually have one little question there, so in the, in the office and, and then the meeting room, are we, when we eventually can get back in there and have a meeting, I think, Tom, you mentioned we could, maybe next meeting we might be able to have there. How would, what, what do we do there? We're not gonna have plexiglass up in that, but we're just gonna, like, all sit six feet apart? Is there any requirement, or?
I think, you know, I think, again, I, uh, that's why I wanna look at it with you, but I think we should, we, we can look at the town office, but we may wanna, uh, um, start in the other building at this point, uh, in the town hall, um, because it is much larger, and, you know, we can space out and probably get a few people in, in the building as well.
Or maybe the school even?
Either, yeah, one of the two.
Yeah.
I, I prefer we use the, um, the town property, though.
Yeah.
Can I, can I say something real quick?
Sure.
Um, I just wanna let you know that, um, title searchers right now are actually set up in the meeting room so that we don't have any, they don't have access to the town clerk's area at all. Um, so I've had to move the table sideways in order to set up the search station. I have to clean in between every single person that comes in, and have to allow fifteen minutes between each person in order to do that, so, um, if you guys are going to end up coming back to the office, if you can just give me some time so I can figure that out, it's just we're trying to keep everyone so that we're not on the same room.
Oh, yeah, no, for sure.
It would seem to, uh, just to make sense that we, you know, meet in the town hall.
Yeah, I think that's, it's a big enough building, um, it's a great building, and it's got parking, and, uh, you know, we can work it out, uh, I'm not sure, we'll have to speak with, um, the library and see what their plans are, you know, I don't know what, um, you know, for those spaces, you know, what the, what the protocol's gonna be going on, going forward, because it is, you know, with, um, books and such, and so, you know, we just don't know, but, um, we can certainly use the space, um, you know, here at the same time, so we can, you know.
Well, they don't allow anybody, you know, the books, and when you take, it's all curbside.
Right, and so it's not gonna, so it may or may not affect them at this point, but they may get to a point where there is, you know, an opportunity for people to go back into the library, so, um, but that's why we'll, you know, we'll reach out to the library and see what their plans are, but also let them know that, um, these are our plans, and this is what we're going to be doing. And we'll have, we'll have to spend a little time in there, uh, uh, to figure out what configuration will work best, but, um, I think that's what we'll do.
Um, while we're talking about the library space, the town hall space, um, we are still not, I, we're not renting the town hall at all until further notice, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Have you had anyone that's wanted to rent it?
Um, I have not had anyone ask, but we do have a booking, I believe it's in August. I don't have the calendar right up in front of me, so I'm kinda holding off on that one. Maybe, um, maybe I should reach out to them and just say, "Hey, this is where we're at. We don't know what's gonna happen," which I'm sure they probably wouldn't even wanna have anything right now either, but, um...
Yeah, it's either, what's, what's the event?
Um, it's a birthday party.
Is it, yeah?
Yeah.
Alright, yeah, I mean, we can, uh, you know, don't need to pull the trigger on that one yet, but, uh, yeah, we're not sure at this point what's going on.
Right.
Alright. Alright, uh, um, so we've got, uh, anything else with, with Cheryl? Alright.
Not at my end, no.
Everyone's good. Alright, Cheryl, well, thank you, feel free to stay on if you want.
Okay, John, I, I just have a question for John, are you all good with the finance committee report? Or do you want me to hold off and wait for you?
Uh, no, I'm okay.
Okay, alright, then I will sign off then.
Alright, Cheryl, and thank you.
Okay.
Alright, thanks, Cheryl.
Yeah, thank you, good night.
Alright, well, if, um, alright, let's go ahead and move on, uh, construction update. I don't know if, uh, Ray, you wanna start with that, or Don, if you're doing anything?
Sure, uh, so we, we really started mobilizing, the soft mobilization, uh, last Friday, we started to put signs up, and kinda continued on that route today, uh, took some materials today. Um, had a meeting on-site with the Hunt, and took at the hedges by the fire station, and, uh, came up with an agreement that we're gonna, uh, we're gonna remove them with the excavator, and hopefully replant them, and, and, uh, and they'll live, if they don't live, then we'll replace them. Uh, and everybody seems to be happy with that.
Alright, good.
Yeah, they were very, uh, they've been very agreeable, uh, initially, it was a little, little shaky when Nick and I first met with, uh, James Hunt, but, um, they've really come around, and, and are pretty much on board with, you know, basically everything that we wanna, wanna do. The, the only other issue was, was the, the outlet pipe, and, and, um, uh, we had talked about, you know, trying to put more dirt on top to make a look of it, then we realized that we wouldn't be able to put any dirt down, down there anyway, so, but, uh, yeah, they were okay with, you know, the design that we talked about and everything.
Yeah, John, uh, late today, I did talk with, uh, I sent an email, and I should've copied you, but anyways, so the design, uh, uh, the design engineer, uh, has signed off on shortening the pipe, so the pipe won't be sticking out in the middle of the stream there, and we're just gonna make the channel larger. Uh, the only thing they're asking is for the town to sign off on it, and, uh, so, um, there'll probably be some first sort of paperwork out to you tomorrow, just, uh, for you to sign off on, as the town, that you're okay with, with it.
Yeah, that's fine, that sounds good, okay.
Good, um, so the lone pine is still, is still standing, was that correct?
Yes, uh, just, uh, Green Mountain Power did their, their thing, cut some branches and so on, so, um, I think later this week, right, Ray, maybe?
Yeah, I think actually, John, I think it's probably, at this point, gonna be right after Memorial Day.
Okay, alright.
It'll be next week, I'm, I'm sure, we just gotta...
Okay, alright.
The reason it's get done this week was, uh, there were some issues with the traffic control plan, and it got sent to somebody who sat on it, uh, didn't know what to do with it, so it was kinda, uh, but we're all set now, so, uh, things are falling into place that, uh, shouldn't be any more delays that I know of.
Okay, alright.
So, so can we get, I don't know if anyone saw that, there was a, on the front, uh...
Yeah, I was just gonna bring... Yeah, there's been a couple, I've gotten some directly emailed to me and stuff too, so...
Is there, so is there a way, uh, Ray, to get a few slices or a piece of that tree?
Yes, oh, definitely, definitely. We'll work with, uh, you know, uh, when the tree's being cut, uh, I don't know, if Don or, uh, Don admitted somebody else would help guide us through that too, but, uh, I don't see that as being a big problem at all.
Alright, good, yeah, and then we, I don't know, get him somewhere, and whoever wants to put it, something together, can do it.
Yeah.
You think those guys across the street could, could mill it for the town or something?
No, it's too big.
Too, it would be too big?
Yeah, we already, we already tried that, yeah, so...
Oh, okay, I mean, I've heard people also mention maybe even some benches or a picnic table or something.
Right, yeah, as a matter of fact, uh, Michael Brown, um, you know, he's got his company, Birds Eye Forestry, he said that he would be happy to donate time and, and effort, and, you know, putting together benches and, and so on too, so, I, I think we're, you know...
You know who's doing that now?
We'll use, we'll use a bunch of it.
Yeah, Gary Brown, um, you know, he's been milling wood now, that's what he's doing. You know, Cheryl's husband.
Yeah.
Yep.
Cause, uh, so he, he might be able to help.
Yeah, so, alright, so John, make sure, uh, you're with Ray, and make sure there's a significant, you know, I'm sure it's just, it's pine, no one wants, you know, otherwise it's not a real valuable piece of tree, so, um, let's get all the big working portions that we can, and, um, we'll...
And, and I've also, also gotten another email out to, uh, Rachel Milner, because after all, it is her tree, so, I mean, you know, you know, we've been talking about what we're gonna do with the wood and everything, and, uh, I, I know that she doesn't have any interest in, in any of it, just some wood chips, uh...
Yeah.
Which I'm also gonna get some, but, um...
I'd love some too.
Yeah, I figure that's, it'd be nice to have that, some wood chips from that tree in, in the garden.
Yeah.
Yep.
Nice.
Yeah, alright, well, uh, so I think that lone pine will be well, uh, well-used. So is there any other construction, uh, updates on that project that we wanna talk about?
Well, just on the, back to the pine tree, would, would, I mean, would, want me to reach out to, and ask Gary Brown about it? If he has any suggestions, if he can mill it or anything?
Um...
Or just...
Yeah, why don't we see what we get, um, Cheryl works with us quite a bit, so, uh...
Yeah.
Uh, and John, so, yeah, we can, uh, certainly work with them.
Ray drives by there all the time.
Yep, I talk with Cheryl, uh, periodically myself, so we can, well, I'll...
Okay, perfect, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I pretty much copy her on, on just about everything, so I, you know, I'll, I'll double-check with her.
Yep.
Yeah.
Alright, um, Ray, anything else, or John, or, or anyone, any other issues on the, can start, or start a construction?
Uh, no, uh, well, we may, um, there's this one other tree that we're probably gonna end up taking down, and that's the, the ash tree that's, uh, in front of the, uh, Westerman-Gemst rental property, right next to the store.
Yep.
Um, and that's not covered, that's, that's, since it's out of the right-of-way, um, that's not part of the project, so, uh, Ray, you're, uh, you're gonna get the numbers from Tree Works, that's what it would be?
Yeah, yes, I will, John, and then we'll, we'll discuss it further at that point, so, uh, yep.
What is, uh, why, why is that one coming down too?
Well, it, it would have to be trimmed up, it, it has, does, does have some, uh, rot in it, um, it also looks like, uh, that Emerald Ash Borer is in, in there as well, um, and, uh, cause it has lots of, lots of exit holes, but it could, that could have to do with the rot too, so I'm not definitely positive, but...
Sure.
Um, I think eventually it's gonna be, it's gonna be a danger, because the, the side where the rot is, is, it's like half of the tree, and, you know, it, it could come down on the sidewalk, so...
Yeah, no, no, that's good, I just wanted, you know, to hear you.
No, I know, I know, I'm just, I'm just saying, we, we looked at it, and, uh, Westerman and Gemst are fine with taking it down, I think they would prefer to have it taken down, um, but, um, you know, we, we could also look at taking out the side that is leaning over the sidewalk, but...
Ah, just, if it's...
You know, it might as well take the whole thing down, you know?
Yeah, while you're doing it, do it right.
Yeah.
Alright, well, uh, and we'll hear from Ray, or the DuBois, or what that's gonna change, so, alright. Um, what about Dickerson Road, how did, how's everything there?
Uh, yeah, we finished that up last week, I, it was, uh, it was a challenge, but, uh, we put some lot of big stone in there, we were about, uh, I think around twenty tons over what we originally thought, but, you know, that's how it goes sometimes, uh, uh, but, uh, as far as I know, uh, the project is completely sent in anyway.
Good. Donnie, what, what's your... Good. Donnie, what, what's your, you were on the road?
Yeah, I know, it's, ah, looking good. I think, um, ah, Martin's just waiting for, you know, as we drive on it, some traffic and, you know, just kinda, ah, ah, push, you know, ah, compact it a bit, and then he's gonna grade in front of there. Um, and then, ah, basic, I mean, at, at some point, I, I guess, you know, some kind of guard rail is gonna be happening there as well. Um, at least that's what he's thinking, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or did it not true?
And so we were able to move, um, the money that was on for the mountain road grant, um, so that money was successfully moved over to this project here. And we will, we will reapply for, um, the structures grant this year, ah, on that mountain road project.
Also, the grants covering Dickerson Road, the, the state allowed you to trans, to transfer it over?
Yes, yep.
Oh, cool.
Yep, Cheryl Lynn, um, puts a considerable amount of time working with, um, the, um, people with the state on that, a lot more difficult than it sounds, if you can believe it, but, ah, it was, ah, successful anyways.
We may have to, ah, the town may wanna look at possibly putting guard rail there. I know Martin doesn't wanna put it in, and it's not a heavily traveled area, but it is, with the trees gone now, it's pretty open too.
Um, I think he, Martin always has, ah, kind of objects to guard rails certainly because of the, the snow and such, but, um, builds up and it's a little more difficult to, to work around them, but, I know we put the ones on the hill going up, they're a little bit easier to work around, and maybe something like that might work there, um, and still provide, ah, the protection that we're looking for.
Yeah.
And as long as this, um, we have this grant, if we can get them under that, I'll, we'll try to do that. So, I'll have him reach out and get a, um, quote on that, ah, cause there's no sense of closing this out without trying to, um, maximize it, especially if we need that.
I wonder if it could just be some, if it could be like a wooden, ah, you know, like, ah, you know, like, just a couple of wooden posts and a wooden beam, you know, and just, and, and keep it really simple, I mean, someone, you, you know, I mean, it's, you gotta be, I don't know how you, yes, you've got to be careful driving through there, and that's what you need to be, I, I, you know, I-
Yep, no, I think, like you said, we don't have to overkill, but, um,
Yeah.
But you hate to lose someone over the hill there, if it's, like you said, it was only one tree that was there, so it sounded like there was a hell of a lot of stuff there anyway.
Right. I mean, we might have to work with, ah, Upper Valley Services maybe, and, and, like, I mean, I could talk to Dennis Gray, he's a great guy, we've done it before, but, the, those cedar bushes that are on the right side, you know, maybe they just gotta really get some serious cutback to them or something, so, people could be a little bit more to the right of the road, and, you know, it, it wouldn't be as, you know, the only time, there's, there's, there's quite a lot of people, when the play, Upper Valley Services is going on, there might be forty cars during the day going in and out of there, so, um, sure, there's gotta be something, but, you know, like, like you just said, maybe it doesn't have to be overkill.
Right, we'll have Martin work with, ah, to see what's out there, and if he, it doesn't sound like he's real thrilled about putting anything there, so I think he'll get something minimal, um, that's still doing the job, cause he's looking to make sure, ah, things are, are safe, but, um, so I, I think, ah-
Well, maybe I can reach out to Dennis Gray, you know, I'll reach out to him, cause I was in touch with him during the whole construction and shutting the road, and maybe I can meet him down there and just sorta like, we could take a look at it, or get maybe Martin to look at it, we should, should like this.
Why don't, ah, when you get, so, all right, Don, once you set up a time with, um, Upper Valley Services, and then let Martin know, um, that you're meeting with him, and Martin's usually pretty good, unless he has something really hard scheduled, he'll, he'll make it there, um,
Yeah.
And, ah, especially if he, I think he'd rather cut something like that back than, than have guard ra- guard rails there, so, um,
Yeah, or, you know, yep.
Why don't you try to reach out, do that, copy Martin and, and ask him for a meeting, or say, you know, I've got this project scheduled, ah, can you attend with me? And if not, just go yourself and talk, and then bring back and meet with Martin, but it's better if you can have, so you're cutting out, cause Martin will have questions that you don't think of, um, ah, just because that's what he does, um, so.
Yeah.
Anyways.
Okay.
All right, very good. So, the construction stuff, sounds like everything is going well, um, thank you, Ray, anything's come up? Of course, John, um, thanks for, for, ah, being right on top of stuff as well, and we look forward to, to more, ah, updates as they come along.
So, that was just the sidewalk, right?
Sidewalks and catch basins, yeah.
And, and Dickerson Road, but, is, can, do we, in this, at this time of the meeting, as far as construction update, do we talk about the bridge?
Um, you can. What, what, what is it you wanna talk about with the bridge?
Well, um, let's see, well, there was, ah, there was, I guess, some notification, um, a letter that we all got at the beginning of the week, from the project manager for the state, saying that it could potentially be closed August and September.
Right, correct, right, we, ah, I think it was Rachel, um, whatever, yeah, it doesn't matter who it is, but, yeah, so, ah, that's, I mean, I, the bridge, until we find out further when construction starts, I don't know if there's a lot that we can, ah, ah, do or plan around it.
Oh, so we don't even really have a, they don't have a, a physical start date?
No, they were looking to start, and if you read that through, they were looking to start, I think, June twenty second, twenty fifth, in that range.
Right.
Um, but because of the contractors having, ah, problems with supplies, they're not sure, you know, when that date's gonna be, and, that's what, ah, she was looking, and if we had any feedback, whether those, um, whether it pushed back made a hu- huge difference, ah, you know, and, ah,
So, yeah.
And, so that was the only thing.
That the bridge would be clo- I'm looking at the email, that the bridge would be closed mid-August to the end of September.
Right.
So, um, I actually, ah, asked Sasha if I should, should I send her some comments, and I did, which I could, you know, just quickly share with you, you know, with the rest of the board, and as far as, I mean, there's probably nothing we can do about it, but if it is delayed, that'll get into the school season, and the increased traffic of everybody driving their kids, or kids driving to school, if, of course, school starts, but let's assume we get some kind of normalcy and schools get back.
Right.
So, there'll be the buses and the cars, I mean, this is what I brought it to Jennifer, there'll be potentially two holidays, Labor Day and, and, ah, Columbus Day, if they, project goes late and goes into October, which will be, you know, also be increased, you know, fall foliage traffic and stuff. And then, um, so then, when I mentioned that to her, and then I just went, here's some stuff that could maybe be thought about as far as, you know, some signage, and, I won't bore you with the details, I can forward to you what I wrote to her, um, as far as some suggestions, and, um, the only other little update I have about that, so I will send you what I, what, what I wrote to this woman, Jennifer, through Sasha. Sasha, are you on, you must be on the line, right?
Yep.
Yeah, so you forwarded that to her, right, with what I wrote, those bullets?
Yes, I did. Yep.
Okay, cool. So, I'll send it to the, I should've copied the rest of the board, but I didn't, I'm sorry. Um, so I did, one other little thing, is that I did reach out to John Jamison, who's on the select board of Waiton-Waitsfield, and, ah, just chatted with him about, you know, ah, Meadow Road, and Pony Farm Road, and, and Worth Road, and he was gonna talk to his board tonight, as far as participating in, um, the, sharing the cost for signage, what kind of signage, we, you know, is it gonna be the electronic, ah, billboard with something written on, and then, you know, I was even talking about, do we get some signs that people's neighbors, our neighbors can put in their yard, like, drive as if your kids lived here, you know, we could maybe get a few of those signs as well. So, that's my Little Pony Farm Road update.
All right. Any, ah, questions for, for Don on that?
None, none here.
All right, yeah, so, I mean, I think, as far as the comments to her, I mean, we all, I mean, I think the obvious, I mean, if anyone doesn't know the schools going on or goes on, it's, it's nuts, but, um, they wanna get it from the discussions that we've had, they wanna get it started as soon as possible, it's not-
Yeah, no.
A question of, ah, them wanting to push off, I just don't wanna see them decide to say, all right, we push it into another, another season. So, I think we need to be careful of, ah, pushing too much, because that might be, you know, what they're, they come back and say, all right, ah, what you guys want, you know, so we gotta be careful about what we say and how we say it, ah, because they can take that, and I don't wanna go through another season, um, you know, with this bridge, the way it's at, um.
Oh, yeah, no kidding, no, I, I mean, this is just, you know, some thoughts on how to make it so the people who live on that road and walk on, you know, don't just get totally destroyed.
No, I think, and I, you know, I think we've talked about that, and, ah,
Yeah, okay.
And, ah, as I said, we've got, and both us and Waitsfield have, there are, there is money, so they, you know, I'm hoping they will, ah, participate, so it'll be interesting, ah, to see what they come up with. Um, but, continue your dialogue with Mr. Jamison, and, ah, let us know what happens, but certainly, um, prior to sending out stuff, please let me, or start with me, or, start with the board as far as, ah, that goes. Got it.
I just worry if we put up too much signage there, we're gonna attract more people to go over that road. Kind of the thing, you tell people not to do something, they're gonna wanna do it more, or people who may not be aware that that goes anywhere are now gonna see these signs and wonder, oh, where is that going? So.
No, no, I agree, Kelly, you make a good point, it's, it's balanced, because, and that's what, um, when we were on one of the calls with the state, um, that was brought up, I think actually Cheryl was on the line, ah, at that point, and she brought, she talked about putting more signage on Pony Farm, and the state's opinion is, the more you put up, you do, you, you attract a lot of people with it, um, and the locals are, the locals know it's there, and are gonna do it, and you need to make them aware of, of safety issues, but the more marquee signs you start putting up, it starts attracting, um, more, more loo- people, so, um, again, that's, you know, we need to discuss that and, and work through that, but, um, I appreciate your, ah, point there, Kelly. All right, anything else as far as signage or, ah, construction, Pony Farm, or, or anything? I notice, um, Martin has spent, ah, the last week or so out on that road, they've been doing ditching, and I think they put down some material, um, I don't, I know they have, cause my wife was trying to, ah, bike on it today, and, or run on it or something that wasn't very friendly, so, um, there's a lot of fresh material on, on that road, and I know they've been working on the dishes, so, um, I think it'll be up to, um, up to the traffic when it, when it does start. All right, so, um, if there's nothing else there, we'll move ahead, um, Sasha, what do you have for reports?
Actually, I have nothing tonight.
Nothing, all right, um, John, I know you had, ah, a meeting with the finance committee this morning, you have some stuff to share?
Yeah, sure do. Ah, the fir- first thing, um, was, ah, from Cheryl Lynn, um, mentioned that, you know, as soon as the grievances are held, um, we should, you know, if need be, have a special meeting so that we can set the tax rate.
Okay.
Sooner, sooner the better, get some money coming in, um, and, um, the finance committee also thought that it would be a good idea to, or, or Cheryl Lynn as well, um, thought it would be a good idea to, um, get some kind of an announcement out in front of the board forum, reminding people that, you know, they can, they can pay early if they want, you know, not that they're gonna get any discount or anything, but, you know, you know, um, Cheryl Lynn said, some people aren't even aware that they can do that, you know, cause the way we ta- talk about, the way we, at town meeting, you know, the article always says November first, um, but, we don't make it clear that, you know, we'll take your money anytime, so, at any rate, um, that might be a good idea to, to do, um.
I know, I think, ah, Don has brought that up a couple times, ah, talking about the tax-
Yeah.
-as well. So, as soon as we know what, what the tax rate is and the bills are out, I think, not only will the bills go out, but also, ah, remind people that there is no penalty for paying early.
Right, okay, um.
So, on the taxes though, can we, I mean, I know it's, it might maybe not, it's impossible, but anything will happen this year, but, if someone's only getting one percent or two percent on their money, right, isn't that what, it's really low, the interest rate right now, on people's, so if, if we were to say to someone, pay your taxes early, we'll give you one percent off, but the town takes that money and then invests it while we're waiting to spend it, or we, you know, we must have a place that we put it in, some bank, or some place that we get interest on that money, wouldn't it be, just kinda be a wash, and that would give people an incentive to pay early?
Yeah, we, unfortunately, we can't do anything with taxes like that, you need to, that has to be voted on by the town.
No, no, I understand, but maybe, maybe that's something to look into in the future, next year, or the year after.
Yeah, no, I think, I think in the last meeting, or even the meeting before, we, we talked about that, as far as looking at, ah, ways, you know, for people to pay early, and I think the finance committee is actually, that's something that we've asked them to, ah, to come up with something.
Yeah, so that's, that's, that's what we also discussed, that, you know, that we'll, we'll review that at some time, you know, not, in the not-too-distant future for, for next year.
Right, yeah, that might be, yeah, good thing, yeah.
Um, the other, but, the other thing, the, in terms of the, um, the paying for the excavator, um, there is more state money and, and federal, ah, money, um, or, or, well, what's, what's happening, according to Cheryl Lynn, right now, is that there's a bill up where, um, they will, for tax anticipation notes, they will, ah, lend it either very, very low rate or zero percent rate, and she thinks that we might, it might also, ah, be for purchases, so, or capital expenditures, so, um, we're gonna wait on that before we make any final decisions on how to finance.
Sure, yep.
Okay, um, but we did, we did figure that the, the rates are low enough, ah, through the banks, that even if that doesn't come through, it might be wiser just to, just to borrow from the bank, um, cause Cheryl, Cheryl Lynn, you know, really, really has some concerns about using any of the savings, reserve money, you know, in case we do need it for, for a tax anticipation note.
Okay, no, that's fine, like you said, money's cheap right now, so,
Yeah.
I'm getting cheaper, so there's no, ah, so that's probably where to go for it.
Right, so, um, you know, rather than do a motion this morning, a couple of people wanted us to, you know, have a what-if type of motion, and I, I suggest we just, just wait and just meet again, you know, with, in a month, or, or whenever we find out, and then, ah, we can decide, so. Um, and then the, the other thing is, um, in adding a member, I believe that if we wanna add a committee member, because we, we did have Don LaRaca before, but, you know, he resigned several months ago, ah, or about a year ago, and, um, so, I, I think we just, basically just need the select board blessing that we can add another member.
All right, have you guys, um, got someone in mind, or you're gonna, how are you, about that?
Well, we did, but then we didn't want, he, nobody's talked to him yet, so, they, they suggest we- We did, but then we didn't want, he, nobody's talked to him yet, so, they, they suggest we don't mention any names in case he reads minutes and fi- and says, "What? I'd never ask to do that."
Right, sure, I'd find out if, well, I think, you know, we've had someone on there, um, you know, it should, uh, uh, we don't, I don't mind, uh, having another person.
Right.
Everyone should have an opportunity, you know, it should be something that we, we open up. But if you guys have a candidate in mind, you know, I'd certainly keep that in mind as I'm talking to candidates. But, um, you know, should, everyone should have an opportunity to, to, uh, to be on that board.
Yeah, okay, I, I agree, um, so, um, yeah, so as long as we have the select board blessing that we can add some, then, then basically we'll have, uh, um...
What does everyone else think, or is this, is that position, um, important enough that we appoint someone that we, that that committee has gone out and handpicked?
But, uh, my opinion is that...
Go ahead, Ray.
Okay, yeah, no, I think, I don't mind adding another board member to that, uh, but it should be put out there that, if we're gonna, uh, we should make it open to everybody, I think you suggested that, uh, earlier, that, um, that we should, we shouldn't just limit it to, to somebody.
Oh, okay, yep. Don, what was your, what do you think?
Well, they could still ask the guy, I would think, you know.
Well, yeah, I know, well, I know, well, Bob
And then put it out there, but
Now, Bob Holden was just, just didn't wanna, you know, say anything to, uh, to this candidate, and I don't mind telling you, just, just, nothing in the minutes at this point, uh, Dan Zucker's name came up, and, and I agree, he would be wonderful. Um, because he really is, is really interested in, in the town, and he's, you know, he's spoken very well at town meeting and so on. Um, but, um, at any rate, so, um, you know, we just didn't want to, um, recommend anybody, number one, uh, without talking to him, and then also didn't wanna talk to him if we didn't have the select board's
Sure.
blessing on adding somebody.
Well, I think, um...
But, I mean, it's, it, bottom line is, you know, we were also reminded that, I mean, that, um, you know, the select board has interviews the people, and we did with Bob Holden, and, um, um, I don't remember if we did with, with Becky. I think we did with Becky O'Clare as well.
Yeah, we did, yeah, I think everyone, so...
Oh, we did, yeah, yeah.
Um, you know, go ahead and why don't you, you know, I think it's fine, uh, you know, uh, but, and go ahead and talk to Dan and say, "Look, we'd like you to be on the board, uh, you need, need to apply, uh, there may be other people applying," yeah, yeah, but
Yeah.
just, uh, you know, have a, and, you know what, if we get some superstars, I mean, I, that, that would be our, you know, our biggest problem, to have two or three superstar economic people come out of the woods, you know? Um, I'd expand the board to, if it was that, uh, if it was something like that, so...
Right, right.
Um, let's not worry about that, let's try to get as many qualified people.
Right. Okay.
All right.
Great.
All right, uh, Kelly, did you have any communications announcements or, or anything?
No, the only thing I was gonna say is I kinda worry about doing a discount on the tax rate, because I wouldn't know how that would work with people who have their S pros. I mean, it's hard enough to get the bank to pay it on time sometimes, let alone having them pay it early, so that kinda cuts a large population out of new home buyers who do that.
Yep, and
So, just something to think about.
Yep, no, I think you're right there.
Yeah.
Um, all right, Don, have you got anything more for announcements, communications or such?
Um, no, I don't know if that, uh, would, I have something else I wanna talk about, but I think it would either be an old or, or new business, so no, I'm good.
All right.
I don't have a lead now.
Um, I think we had, we had, uh, communications, I think you all saw, that came from, uh, Peter Kulis, is that how it was pronounced?
Yes.
Um, did anyone have an opportunity to, to look at that?
Yeah.
He was, uh, he was looking for us, the select boards, he was, he was a resident from Waterbury, writing the select boards urging, uh, open discussion with the Harwood Union Unified District School Board, um, about, um, Bridget Neese concerning, um, transparency and, and other issues. Um, John, have you heard anything about this or read much about it?
Uh, no, I mean, that's, that's the first I had, uh, I had heard anything about it. And it's not only transparency of, of Bridget, it's, it's the board, or primarily the chair and vice chair, who it looks like knew all about it too, and they never brought it to the board, so, um, I, I think we've, yeah, that should be pursued further.
All right, why don't, um, you know, we got, I haven't had a, uh, an opportunity to really spend a lot of time looking at it, I, I have read it, um, but as we're meeting next time, you know, why don't we, between now and then, take a little bit of more time, uh, take a look at that, um, and then maybe, uh, you know, the board, you know, we'll see, some, maybe the board, as they're getting out of this budget, uh, woe that they've been in, and it sounds like they may with this new vote, um, you know, maybe this is something that they could put on their agenda. But, um, let's, let's bring this up on our, our next, um, uh, board meeting as, as an old business item.
Yeah, and perhaps, um, Tom, if you could reach out to our representatives to, you know, see what they know about it?
Yeah. Okay, yep.
You know, get, it would be good to get their, their input, and then, you know, that would help us quite a bit too.
All right, and that's, uh, Maxine and
No, no, um, no, I mean, our
Oh, uh, our, our, our board members, yep, 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 yep.
Yeah.
Yep. Sorry. Yeah, absolutely, I will do that.
I mean, surely you could reach out, reach out to Maxine.
I think
Come to think of it, yeah.
Well, they should, I mean, but they, they
The system-wide thing, so...
They absolutely, uh, run away from anything that is, any controversy, which is really disappointing, um, but anyways.
But, do I understand it, just in a quick nutshell, that we're gonna, we're gonna be voting on the same budget amount that was turned down, but it's not gonna have the school relocations and the construction and all that? I mean, the, the middle school's gonna stay at Harwood, and the, I mean, and five, six is gonna stay in Moretown, and that's going away for, for ano- another year at least, is that how you understand it, or?
That's how I understand it.
Well done.
What?
I as well understand that as well, like that, that it's, uh...
That seems to be the word, I haven't seen anything, you know, really, I'm waiting, this week's Valley Reporter will probably have that story.
Right.
That's what I thought I heard, okay.
And I did see, um, there was a, uh, oh, a piece in the front page part there on, uh, that Peter, um, wrote.
Yeah.
Um, and Peter's been, you know, an advocate for voting down the budgets, and has been really on top of this as far as what's going on, um, and he's, he's endorsing this and saying they're on their way to a, um, you know, the right way. So that gives me a little bit of confidence that
Yeah, me too.
that things are, are going in the right direction.
Well, does that, does that now make it that we can backburner, uh, nail the, the pulling out of the school district, the, the nail, nails, uh, petition and such, maybe that's gonna go in a little bit of the back burner?
Uh, we'll see, you know, let's, let's, uh, let's hear more of what they have to say, I mean, this is
Yeah.
You know, I think you never wanna say no to anything until you get everything right in front of you, but
Right, yeah.
I think, I think things can be, uh, worked out.
Yeah, this is just for one year, and, you know, who knows what, what they'll have the following year, so...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, this, they didn't really have much choice, you know, um...
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
You know, they were really over a barrel, and, I mean, they put themselves there, uh, I mean, for God's sakes, but, um, and I still wonder whether they understand what they, or why they were, uh, put there, but anyways. Um, so that's, I just wanted to bring that up, the other thing is, I did sign off on a letter to CB Fiber, um, from the towns, and it was urging, uh, funds for, um, you know, expanded fiber into the towns.
Mm-hmm.
So it's just a kind of a plea because of, um, things that are going on, so nothing big, just another, uh, endorsement there, um...
Okay, good.
And, uh, so I think that's, that's all I had, um, I guess we have the minutes, uh, for the fourth, uh, May fourth, uh, twenty twenty. Is there any, uh, one that has, there's a motion on that?
I'll move, we accept those minutes of, uh, May, May four, May?
May fourth, you're right.
May fourth, yeah.
You good, uh, is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Kelly, uh, any further discussion, or is anything anyone wants to, um, address in those meetings, minutes?
Nope.
All right, here, nothing, I'm going to, uh, ask for a vote, all in favor of aye?
Aye.
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 Sounds like a unanimous, thank you. All right, so now we're into old business, and, Don, it sounded like you might have had something that you wanted to bring up on old business, what's, what do you got?
Well, I wanted to, um, you know, when we had a meeting before we all shut down, we were all thinking about different things that we wanted to, you know, like
Yep.
see or want to do and stuff, and then obviously we tabled it all because it's just so crazed, right? But, um, I was thinking about getting back on, uh, some thinking about the town hall slash library, and whether we would actually try to see if we could get some kind of a committee, or, I don't really like the word task force, but you could throw that name out there, you know, and, you know, put it out there, see if some people might wanna volunteer, if they'll, I'm sure some library trustees would be interested in being on the, on a committee like that, just sort of start to, uh, get a feel from the community, and we have another year now, it's gonna go by, and at least maybe during this year, we could be thinking and talking about some possibilities, you know, going forward with the town hall. So that's
Yep.
what I'd like to try to work on and try to do, I mean, even though the first kind of meetings might be by Zoom, but, you know, at least we could get it going.
Yeah, I don't, I think it certainly has to start, I think, with, um, the decision we made to have the library there for the next year, um, give us a little time, because it's not like we're, we have to even debate about, "All right, what are we gonna do, do in this fall? Are we bringing the library back, are we not?"
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Um, I think it's just, when's the timing right as far as this, this pandemic, to try to start, uh, getting something together? I don't know, maybe people have a ton of time right now and, and can do it, um, but I'm concerned a li- some of the people that, uh, may have some interest in this and some skin in the game here, you know, aren't the Zoom types, um, that's
Yeah, that's true.
some of the historical society pe- people.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Um, and so I don't want them to feel like, hell, you know, we're getting bamboozled here, we, you know, not, they may be tech wizards, so I, I shouldn't, you know, I
Yeah, no, I hear what you're saying, we wanna make sure it's totally inclusive.
Right, so, I mean, I think, what, you know, what I'd maybe have you do, Donnie, is, why don't you come up with a plan of, "All right, this is what I want to, this group to, to do," I mean, I think we all know what we want it to do, but let's put something in writing, and let's think out, all right, what are we, how are we gonna put this together? What's this group gonna look like, um, and why don't you come back with the board to that, and, all right, and say, "All right, I've got a plan, this is what I, how I want, I wanna start, you know, this month here, get eight members, nine people, seven, whatever, or as many people that would do it,
Mm-hmm.
um, have a public forum here, you know, and start like that, um,
Okay.
so that there's a plan that we as a board can endorse, um, yeah...
Yeah, maybe even a schedule, a rough schedule.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm good for that.
Yeah, okay, good.
Cool, all right.
Sounds good.
Um, is everyone else, uh, good with that?
Yeah, that sounds fine.
All right, so, um, any other old business that anyone has or wants to bring up? Very good, um...
Uh, yeah, I think I'm good. Oh, yeah, I have one, yeah.
All right, Don, what is it?
We wanna be thinking about the Mad River Valley ambulance, that's on our, on the back burner, about how they, they came to us and said, you know, I mean, then of course we went into, everybody's in a, to call it a
Right, I think we, I think we decided that, um...
Something in August we were gonna ask people what to
Nah, I think, I think, I think, I think November is what we, uh, originally thought on the, uh, the, the election, right?
I think so, Tom.
Yeah, I think we wanted to give us some time, um, and certainly now with what's going on, before I start giving away too much money, we need to, we need to figure that out, but, you know, I think it's good, it's, you know, we can put that on an old business pending down below, so that
Yeah.
it's something that doesn't fall off the radar, but it's nothing that we need to, um, proactively work on now, I don't think.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
All right, um, so any other new business, or any new business out there?
Uh, have you seen the most recent email from Katrina Brackett? Just came through, uh...
No.
Hour or so ago.
No, no.
No.
Uh, it's, it's pretty short, let me just read it quickly, "Uh, hi, everyone, I have helped NECA turn into a non-for-profit called Neck of the Woods. The superintendent informed us yesterday, no summer programs can use the school this year. We kind of anticipated this, so are already thinking how we can run in multiple locations. Do you guys have any suggestions? One thought was the basement of the town hall for the pre-K kids, please let us know your thought." I, I don't know, I, I think it's a little early to start thinking about, you know, something this summer for, for the little kids.
Yeah.
I think you're right.
You know, something outside maybe, but I don't see, I don't see indoors as being a...
I mean, especially if the basement is not the greatest place.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, listen
They can't use, they can't even use a, a elementary school, huh, wow.
So this is
Yeah.
This was NECA, again, what we're talking about?
Yeah, and, and, and then she signs it, Katrina Brackett, Neck of the Woods Office Administrator.
So were they just like canning their whole program they had at the school, it sounds like?
I, I, yeah, it does sound that way.
Because that, that's what was a major draw there, that Dwayne worked on, I thought was
I
I mean, they, even, she talked about it as being, uh, you know, it was even financially, uh, worked, and now they're discontinuing it.
Well, it doesn't sound like they're discon- discontinuing it necessarily, but
Well, they're taking them out of the buildings, John, I mean, you know...
Um, well, no summer programs can use the school. I mean, in other words, they can't, it's, it's not there now, and they're, and it looks, it sounds like they're not gonna do any summer programs as well.
Yeah, well, this, yeah, I don't see what a week, I don't know, um, yeah, so I thi- thanks for bringing that up, I think we need to look into that a little bit more.
Yeah, no, I definitely, definitely agree, and I, I certainly would wanna know what this turning NECA into a non-for-profit is all about too. It's kinda weird.
Yeah, no, I, it's just, I'm, it's weird that, um, but, you know, I
John, can you maybe forward that to us or something?
Oh, she sent us everybody.
Oh, she did, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't get it, okay.
Um, oh, you're not on there, come to think of it.
There you go.
Yeah, all right, I'll, I'll Yeah, all right, I'll, I'll forward that to you.
Okay, thank you.
I came at five thirty-seven, I just picked up my, uh, thing, yeah, all right, yeah, that's something we should be interested in, take a look at.
Oh.
Um...
There it comes.
All right. All right, so any other new business?
Well, you guys are gonna kill me, I gotta, I gotta just ask something, 'cause I just looked at my notes, and, and it goes back with Tom and Ray, you, myself, so you were talking about, uh, this is just quickly on the sidewalk, about trying to meet with all the people in town, or, you know, be able to talk to them, remember we were gonna try to do that, and we realized it's not doable, but, so Ray, I think you, you said you were handing out a flyer to everybody, and...
Oh, that's, I'm sorry, I for- I forgot, uh, to mention that, yeah, what we did actually is, is, uh, Sasha and Cheryl Lynn sent out a letter to everybody.
Right.
It was the le- the letter that, uh, came from Dewboys, and, uh, we decided it would be, would be a, uh, better idea, actually, I spoke with Tom about it too, that would be better for them to get something, you know, mailed to them, rather than stick it on their door or something, you know, with...
Right, right.
Yeah, so, um, so those all went out, and, uh...
And, and there's, you know, one other thing, again, Donnie, it's a little new, 'cause you just got on, but we've been dealing and talking with these people in the village for several years about this project.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, I mean, I mean, we have met, you know, over the years, several, several times, so at this point, nothing's new, you know, that's why I even said to John the other day, "Well, what else do we need to tell? We don't have anything else to say or tell."
Yeah.
You know, everyone knows what's going on, it's been a part of the process, so, um, you know, sometimes we, we forget that, or we did, and, and...
Okay, yeah.
But with everything going on, they came up with a letter, um, it was sent out, and, you know, more what I've gotten from anyone is like, you know, when are you starting, you know, so...
Right.
Um, you know, I think, uh, that's how that was handled.
Although I, I will say, it did, it did prompt a response from, uh, um, Carla and Fred Messer, they own the, the little house right at the corner, Doctor's Brook Road, right at the end, and they were mentioning that their, their septic line actually goes under the road to the other side, and we have other lines, Cutler's is the same thing, goes across, or, or, uh, Miltner's, um, same thing, goes under the road to the other side, and, um, they said it was never on the drawings, and so I confirmed that with, uh, Nick at Dewboys, and he said, "Yeah, it's not on there." So, you know, it was, it was really good, we did get that letter out, because, you know, they, they never came forward be- before, way back when, when we were talking about these things, so...
Yeah, well, good, I guess it's good we don't wanna be running, uh, digging up sewage lines...
Right, right.
Letting them go in the...
Well, I've, I've, well, I've called and left a message with them that we would sure like to know the exact location, I mean, if they could mark exactly where it is, so they can be really careful when they, we're digging out there.
Now, this isn't, those aren't on any kind of town deeds or anything like that that we know of them?
Well, I mean, you know, again, this is all the work that, um, that Pat did, you know, I mean, that was, as far as I know, that was his job, to do all that beforehand, so I guess, whatever happened, it was never put on the drawings.
At the court, the, where we heard, the Cutler, the Cutler Building sewer goes right into the Town Hall sewer by deed, huh, somewhere.
Okay, right, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and so, so I, I mean, I'm sure there were, at, at some point, I'm, I would imagine everybody's probably went under the, the road, you know, until they dug their own well, and, and, you know, on that side, the other side.
You mean, septic, and there's also water, I mean, I know...
Right.
I know people, um, that have, their springs are up on the hill, and that, you know, where they have their water fed down across the road, so is that stuff on there, John?
Yes, yeah, those, those are all on there.
All right. I thought, that's a good thing, but, all right, well, um, continue with that, and, and thanks for, for sharing that stuff, um, so yeah, Don, there's, uh...
Yeah, no, I understand, I was just curious about how that was going.
No, it was, it wasn't dropped, it was just something that was just taken, there was, actually, I think there was an email Sasha, it was covered in there, but it's, it's in the bottom, but, anyway. Sasha, anything else that you have that's going on, concerned, now Sasha's back in the office, um, working, we don't have anyone, it's not open for people to come in, um, Sasha, why don't you share any highlights or disappointments, or anything that we should, uh, be aware of?
Um, not really anything right now, um, I'm not back in the office every day, but I've been going in and being able to get a little bit more work done with the photocopier and scanning things and stuff like that, that I don't have at home.
All right, all right, um, so if there's nothing else anyone has on their mind they wanna discuss, um, we'll be signed to adjourn here.
Well, I, I did get the thing about to look at the, um, being the first constable, and, um, I, I, I don't think I'm up for the, the challenge.
Okay.
Right.
So, we're, we're still, we're still in need of a first constable.
You know what, speaking of first constable, what we, we need to, um, petition, the next time you, we see our, like, our Maxine and the other lady there, uh, from Winkley, uh, Kara, we can ask them about, maybe the, the state can change their laws, that the, uh, the constable should have powers to do, um, speed, speed enforcement, you know, they have had some complaints with people with speeding cars and such, but we've never been able to, I mean, the, the sheriff's office was worthless when we had them contracted, they couldn't give us reports when they were here, um, where they were, and they wouldn't take any direction from us, um, the state police does what they can, but, you know, their thing is you need to continue just to call us if you want us to come around, um, but if we had a constable that, the only thing they did was just ran, ran a radar gun, and, uh, did that, you know, and had the powers to give a ticket, I think, you know, we could settle a lot of our speeding problems and, and, um, I don't know, maybe, um, you know, wouldn't, I mean, I just think we have, we have, it's a huge problem, I don't know any solutions aside from, you know, having someone, I don't know.
I don't know, yeah.
Right, yeah.
So, next time they're, you, you're talking to them, they wanna do good and make a nice law, you know, why don't they, uh, they do that for us? All right, so...
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, good night, everyone.
Good night.